September 26, 2024, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: on January 25, 2024, and July 26, 2024; emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. In addition, there will be a discussion regarding student matter. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Mr. Trebowser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carried. We'll retire us to closed session. We'll be out on or about 6:30 PM. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Please rise for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with this law, the Constitution of America.
Hi, everybody. Sorry we're so late. We had a lot to discuss. Do I have a motion or reconvene?
So motion.
Good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Mr. Trebowser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
So motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing all ayes. Any opposed? And carried. Okay, Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids or proposals received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were no bids received this time.
Terrific. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Elena Hannaf, if I pronounced that correctly, received by, excuse me, from Woodbridge High School. Nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elena Hannaf is a senior at Woodbridge High School. Elena is a well-rounded student who is friendly, ambitious, and always willing to lend a helping hand. Academically, Elena has completed numerous advanced placement and dual enrollment classes over the years. She currently has a 4.14 GPA and is ranked number one in her class. Elena is very passionate about participating in many extracurricular activities. She is the vice president of the History Honor Society, a member of the Academic Club, as well as Heroes and Cool Kids. Elena especially values being part of the Heroes and Cool Kids Club, allowing her to help give back to the younger kids in the community and serve as a role model and mentor. Elena also enjoys volunteering her time with the Interact Club and the Letter for Roses Club. Elena is considering a major in law and plans on applying to Fordham, Rutgers, and Georgetown University. We know Elena will make Woodbridge proud. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Good evening. On August 26, at School Number One, there was a meet-and-greet with the new principal, Mrs. Eats. Students participated in together this Thursday on September 5. The following was celebrated in the school community. On September 11, Patriot Day, and of September 13, John Berry Day. Open House took place in the evening on September 18, and the Woodbridge Children's Library Inn was available for library card sign-ups. The PTO held a fundraiser at Woodbridge Brewery on September 18. On September 25 and 26, students participated in a grand fallen's assembly. During the month of September, students have been collecting pasta for the Refresh Organization. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations began on September 15 and will run until October 15. There will be a math sciences after-school program with grade-five students on September 30. And lastly, the school community is looking forward to the Week of Respect starting October 7. At School Number Four and Five, Open House took place in the evening on September 11. Students participated in the PTO Back-to-School PJ Day on September 13. Finally, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations began on September 15 and will run until October 15, with students participating in various activities celebrating the Hispanic culture. Students were invited to a PTO Back-to-School Pancake Breakfast on September 22. And lastly, the school community is looking forward to October 7, Week of Respect kickoff. At School Number 11, Open House took place in the evening on September 19. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations began on September 15 and will run until October 15, with students participating in various celebrations. And finally, the school is looking ahead to October 7 in anticipation of the Week of Respect, where students will participate in various classroom activities focusing on social and emotional learning. At School Number 19, Menlo Park Terrace opened up their new school year with their new theme, MPT Number 19, Where the Magic Begins. Hallways were all named after one of the Disney theme parks. Teachers decorated their classroom doors with their specific theme park, and Disney quotes are read at the beginning of each day. The Week of September 16, Menlo Park Terrace will follow the action that was created by the Sandy Hook Promise Organization, Hello Week, where the goal is simple: greet each student each day so that they feel seen, valued, and connected to the school and community. We invite community members to join us to greet students as they enter the building. The students are so excited that adults in the community take time from their busy schedules to share a smile, a hello, a high five, or a fist bump. This evening, the PTO is sponsoring a fun party as one of their after-school community fun nights. Lastly, on September 27, School 19 will hold their PBSIS kickoff pep rally, promoting positive behavior throughout the school. At School Number 25, there was a huge turnout at their open house, which was held on Thursday, September 12. A scholastic book fair started September 24 and will run through September 27. There is a PBSIS kickoff pep rally scheduled for Friday, September 27, where Woodbridge High School student representatives will attend and share what it means to be respectful, reasonable, and kind. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations began on September 15 and will run until October 15, with students participating in various celebrations. Looking ahead, both the Week of Respect and Fire Prevention Week will begin on October 7. The PTO will sponsor a fun run on Friday, October 18, and Jim Basketball Jones will be presenting for the PBSIS Assembly on October 23. At School Number 28, MJS held a chocolate walk to welcome students back to school. The school is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month during the month of September, with students participating in various activities and lessons to recognize the Hispanic culture. Open House was held the evening of September 10 to an outstanding turnout. MJS, in partnership with Woodbridge Township, will be participating in the Captain Carlson Living Shoreline Project in Seaworn. And lastly, from October 7 to the 11, MJS will recognize the Week of Respect. At Avonel Middle School, Open House was held on Thursday, September 12. Hispanic Heritage Month is being celebrated during the month of September. Students will participate in various activities and lessons that recognize Hispanic culture. The students kicked off their Wildcat Cup competition amongst all grade levels. Grades earn points for participating in Spirit Days, having the best attendance, making honor roll, and having the least amount of discipline. On October 7, AMS will begin to recognize the Week of Respect. At Ford's Middle School, Open House was held on the evening of Thursday, September 19. On September 20, there was a whole-school activity recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Then on Thursday, October 10, there will be a family potluck celebration uniting all families with food and activities. Friday, September 27, is scheduled for the PBSIS kickoff celebration. Helping FMS will be the JFK High School band and cheerleaders. On Friday, October 4, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there will be a call-and-run sponsored by the PTO, getting the Ford's Middle School families and the community to celebrate the new school year. This event will include fundraising for all activities that occur throughout the school year, as well as scholarships and grants. The rain date will be Friday, October 11 at the same time. Lastly, on Tuesday, October 1, late buses begin, and so will all the after-school clubs and activities. At Woodbridge Middle School, Open House was held on the evening of September 12. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations began on September 15. September 19 marks the start of fall sports, baseball and softball. Looking ahead, October 7 marks the start of the Week of Respect. And at Woodbridge High School, on September 11, 40 juniors and seniors attended the HBCU Classic New Jersey Education Day at Kane University. On September 13, at the Woodbridge versus Plainfield football game, former Woodbridge High School principal and community leader, Mr. Arthur Lee Warren, kicked off Friday Nightlights with the coin toss. Many alumni, staff, and community members came out in honor of the special night to celebrate the contributions Mr. Warren has made to our school community. The Woodbridge High School Spanish Honor Society, Hispanic Culture Club, and Diversity Council morning announcements commenced in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Also in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the Woodbridge High School Spanish Honor Society will visit Schools Four and Five to lead activities that recognize and celebrate Hispanic culture. The Spanish 4C students will visit several Woodbridge High School Special Education self-contained classes to teach students simple Spanish words and phrases. And finally, the Hispanic Culture Club will host two events. On October 3, there will be a school-wide potluck featuring food, music, and games that celebrate Hispanic culture. And October 23, there will be a face painting competition in celebration of Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena, for your detailed report. Tonight, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but should you have other obligations or conflicts, you're welcome to excuse yourself.
Unfortunately, I'm unable to stay any longer, but thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of August 2024.
Mr. Harris, I report the reports of the attendance officers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, yes. And joining us this evening, as per tradition, Mr. Osborne, Woodbridge High School principal, joined us with Elena's family. Thank you for being here, Ms. Osborne. This is the public portion of the meeting. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Anyone wish to speak on the agenda this evening, please come to the podium.
Is this public comment or just agenda?
This is on the agenda. It's public comments at the end. All right, thank you. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations for us?
Yes, Mr. President, I have 17 items to present to the Board this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Do we have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
So motion.
Good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, I abstain on item number one in the name of Nazan Mohammed, and I approve all the others.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda, Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. I'm just going to make a couple. Items number five and six, we're recognizing members of our community from Town Hall, from Applebee's of Woodbridge, and Councilwoman Lisbeth De Jesus, among many donors from the township and beyond, who supported the numerous backpack drives and school supply drives. Thank you very much for supporting our students. Those members who led those charges are being recognized this evening with resolutions, and I know Dr. Massimino and his team mailed them a copy of those resolutions. And then finally, item number four, we recognize our 35 employees who had perfect attendance last school year. So thank you to those employees who kept themselves healthy and made every attempt to be at work every day. Your efforts are appreciated, and they go noticed. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities and Technology Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following nine items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. We have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I just want to bring to everyone's attention, just want to appreciate the administration for multiple things on this agenda, but most importantly, one of the things that, as a former IT person, you know, we have something called the iteration method or the waterfall method, where we apply something, we take feedback, and then we make course corrections. And I am very happy to say that our administration is doing that in the curriculum aspect as well as the technology aspect. We're applying certain things, seeing what's working, what's not working, and, you know, rolling back what's not, and then implementing new course corrections. So I really want to appreciate the administration, Mr. Pastrino's office, and especially, you know, everyone in Colt. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, AJ. Any other comments on curriculum? No, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowser. We have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I heard many. We have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none at the moment. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Building and Grounds Agenda, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Perez. We have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
I'm going to turn it to you, Mr. Bush.
Yeah, I think we'll start with the motion.
Start with the motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, you got it, all right. First up, Negotiations Agenda, Mr. Perez, Mr. Velez, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Joe. Sorry.
The Board of Education Committee for Negotiations present the following one item, and I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Perez.
Okay, and I'm just going to, the Board President's turning to me because this is sort of a rare moment, but by law, since the Board is now considering a new contract or an amended contract, or as you say, a new contract to replace an existing contract with the superintendent of schools, we're going to have a public hearing with respect to, by law, it's required, with respect to the contract. So if anyone at this time is looking to address the Board of Education with respect to the superintendent's contract, you have an opportunity to address for, you know, I guess we could say for, what's the agenda, is this three minutes?
Five.
You do five minutes?
Yeah.
Five, I'm sorry, I get confused when I see some of my boards. You have a five-minute opportunity to address the Board. So if anyone's looking to address the superintendent's contract, this is your opportunity, similar to the budget hearing, for example, that we have once a year. Okay, so if you have your motion, seeing none, I would ask that you all consider closing the public comment period. This was the hearing, we've addressed our responsibility, and then obviously, there's been a motion to second. You would do a roll call vote on this, and obviously, there are a couple of abstentions just to remind the Board members who are required to abstain.
Sure. Would you like me to close the hearing? All right. May I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
So motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Sedana, thank you. Do I need to do a roll call on that?
Do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on the motion. This is to close the hearing. Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Abstain. Wait a minute, I thought he was just voting to close. I thought you were, a roll call now.
No, 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 roll call for the...
That one you didn't need a roll call. Well, let's do it anyway, since we already started. Go ahead. Frankie De La Pietro, yes, it's my fault. Go ahead.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
The motion to close the hearing is closed. Before we move on to the vote, are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
I'll be abstaining on item number one.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
I will abstain on the agenda.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
I'll be abstaining on item number one.
Congratulations, Dr. Massimino.
Thank you. Thank you.
To the Personnel Agenda, to wrap up the evening, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 58 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I, I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Trebowser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
I will be abstaining on the name Linda Trebowser, item 47, yes, on all other items.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Seeing none. Any new business? Yes. Mr. De La Pietro.
Just one real quick thing. Next week is Fire Prevention Week. A lot of the firehouses are doing fire prevention programs in Ford's on October 7 and 8, from 5:30 to 9:30. At the Ford's Firehouse in King George Road, they're having their open house. On Wednesday, October 9, Port Reading and Woodbridge Fire Department are doing their open houses. If you check the, your local firehouses in the other fire districts, they're also doing fire prevention programs throughout the whole week.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. I look forward to coming over to Ford's. They do a fantastic job over two nights, right?
Yes, two nights.
Great, great program. Anybody else? Ms. Perez, it looks like you got, you're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to note that on Wednesday, October 16, at 7:00 PM, there will be a presentation on vaping, what every parent should know, what every guardian should know, again Wednesday, October 16. This will be held at the Acacia Youth Center on Port Reading Avenue.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Sure.
You sort of stole my thunder here.
Oh, yeah?
I wanted to thank, from the Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda, the backpack giveaways. I don't think you can stress those things enough when people give back to our community and give back to our kids who deserve it and need it and are ready to be, to start learning on day one, and I just want to thank everyone for their participation, especially, what is it, Lisbeth De Jesus, Megan Koepcha, Kelly Walsh, and Pastor Lee Samuel, and Dawn Marquez from Applebee's, who every year does a great job stuffing the bus and stuffing backpacks and giving them out to the community. So I just wanted to, it bears repeating, so thank you very much, guys.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. Anybody else? Just two items for myself. Thank the administration. We heard this from Mr. Sedani, our director of transportation. He talked about this being one of the smoothest starts to the school year, so I want to thank the administration, everybody. Can't name you all, but thank you very much. And, you know, parents, if there's any feedback to how we got started, open houses, please reach out to the Board members, Dr. Massimino, whomever. And then finally, a thank you to Dr. Massimino for restarting the Student Advisory Committee. An opportunity for the Board and the administration to hear from students, right? They are our customers, for lack of a better term, and it's important that we hear from our constituent, like any business would, do a focus group or a survey, so I want to thank you for doing that. Thank you. And this is the portion of the meeting that's open to the public. We'd love to hear from you. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have completed, until you have fully completed all of your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. Please come to the microphone, name and the section of the township in which you reside. Hello, sir, how are you?
Hi, how you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
My name is Mr. Bo. We reside in Keysby Ford's area.
Okay, great.
And I have two children. This is my son here. I also have a daughter that goes to MPT Number 19. My comment today, my concern, is with the after-care program at the school, I'm having some issues there, and I just want to know who to talk to about that and how to address those issues.
Okay. Is that the conclusion of your question?
Yes, sir.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Massimino, he's got the nitty-gritty on those kind of things.
Mr. Bo, was...
Yes, sir, Mr. Bo.
Okay, let me make sure I get your name right, sir. If you want to send, you can send me an email if you'd like. We have an after-care supervisor that oversees all the sites, and then we have site manager at Eaton's Road site, so if you want to send me an email, I'm happy to connect with you and then make sure we kind of narrow the channel so I can put you in touch with, if there's somebody we need to talk to, or if there's an issue, who should be looking into that. So if you want to send me, if it's easier, you can send me the email directly. My email's right on the website, or Ms. Lanigan, at the end of the table here, can give you my contact information.
Perfect. That'd be great. Now, I'm sorry, I have a quick follow-up here, if I may. Sure. The issue that I'm having is, it's, without getting too involved, without saying too much, it's, there's just me and my child's mom that can take care of them, which is why we pay for them to go to after-care.
Sure.
It's almost like he's being threatened to be, you know, suspended from after-care, and we don't have an alternative, so we're in a pinch, and that's, I just wanted to make that additional comment. I'll get your, I'll get your contact info, I'll send you an email.
Please send me the email, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Lanigan. Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
I'm going to set my five-minute timer here. I'm gonna set my five-minute timer here. Anthony Marr, I'm a resident of Edison. I was here roughly a month ago to speak on policy fifty-one forty-five point seven. Here again to speak on that policy.
Sure, please.
To seek that it should be repealed, I thought I gave some pretty good reasons last month. There may be some here saying to themselves, why bother repealing it? If we repeal this policy, we're still bound by state law anyway, which essentially requires the same stuff that's in this policy. It's pointless to repeal the policy, therefore, we will not repeal it. We have laws in our state that, against drunk driving, and for good reason. Drunk drivers kill and seriously injure many people on the road, but not every drunk driver kills someone, not every drunk driver injures someone. Suppose we said to ourselves as a state, as residents in New Jersey, you know what, because not every drunk driver kills someone, not every drunk driver injures someone, therefore, we will not have any laws against drunk driving. Ridiculous, right? I think we all, that's absurd. The suicide rate amongst the LGBT community is noticeably higher. I have handouts with information on that, I hope you all got it. I attempted to email it earlier this week, reasons I don't understand, it just never made it, so I now have it in paper form. The suicide rate is markedly higher among the LGBT community. We need to make a statement. The LGBT community would say, it's prejudice. It is not prejudice. It is a fundamental inherent character in us, that we are male and female. God tells us this. He tells us in the scriptures, the Holy Bible. The Lord Jesus Christ said, have you not read that he who created them, made them, from the beginning, made them male and female? You try to mess with the fundamental nature of how we're made, it's gonna create confusion and conflict in a person. Repeal fifty-one forty-five point seven and send a statement. Yes, we have to abide by our state laws. You can't make it out of the batter's box on a ball field, the first base, second base, third base, and home plate, unless you get out of the batter's box. Get out of the batter's box, send a statement to our state legislators, we have to do something about this. Even our state government recognizes the problem. Attached to your packet is a law passed January of this year in our state, creating the New Jersey Youth Suicide Prevention Advisory Council. It was passed in January of this year, you're probably familiar with it. Suicide in our youth is a real problem, especially amongst the LGBT community. Send a statement to the state, we in Woodbridge disapprove of this, we're trying to do something to stop it. I myself have sent an email to my state assumente, Mr. Sterling Stanley, I'm waiting for him to get back to me, I have to follow up on that. He is a vice chair in the, of a committee in the New Jersey Department of Education. Sounds like a good starting place for this. Do something. If you sit by like a proverbial bump on a log and do nothing, saying, well, I'll just go with the flow, in the meantime, children are killing themselves. This is not kids throwing spitballs in class, this is literally a matter of life and death. Do something. Send a statement, repeal this policy, send a statement to the residents of Woodbridge and to our state legislators in Trenton. We need to do something, we're trying to do something, we expect you in Trenton to do the same. Thank you for your time.
I will say, I'll opine that we as a Board, as committee members of the Communications, Policy, and Planning Committee, we've taken previous public comments under consideration, and we have decided that we're going to continue our policy. We believe it actually protects students, it gives the administration guidance as to how to work with students, and again, we think it's the right way to go, and we appreciate your comments and thank you for sharing.
How does it protect students?
Sir, because, because it shows that we support them, that's, we're, every chance we get, we're going to choose side of the children, protect them, when they're in our care, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, hey, Mr. Bakula. My name is William Bakula, my son goes to JFK, we live in Island. So, I'm here today to talk about the fact that, I think that, this is gonna sound weird, that smart kids, oh, I focus on academics and what I, how I look at the school, I think the smart kids in a school are being punished and treated unfairly for their futures. And I get this from, you sort of have to get into this situation to learn, so that's why my son has now entered ninth grade at JFK. And you don't, you kind of read this ahead of time, but you don't really think about it, but then you get there and you realize that there are issues. So, without using his name, I'll use his example, but without using, you know, throwing anybody else under the bus, so, he went to a class and then he went to an AP class, because he didn't think he was challenged. So he went to the AP class, and there is kind of a view I have, a question I had, that Mr. Posterino answered, I talked to him on the phone for a while, he did a great job of answering, I give him kudos for that. And there are a couple of ways of teaching an AP course. You can teach it towards the content, because it's listed as a college-level course, or you can teach it towards success at the AP exam. It's hard to do both successfully, and some kids, they come into the class because they want to use, get a good grade in that class, and use that as entry into a college, and they don't really care about the exam. Some kids get in because they want to learn the exam, so if you get into a class that is focusing on taking the exam, and then you care about the content, you're not put in a good environment for learning, because in this specific instance, the content was left almost exclusively to the child with not much feedback, but there's a lot of feedback into how to succeed at taking the exam. So, so there's a lot of work that they do, there's a lot of thought that they do in these classes, and a lot of his time was taken up, and yet, in the first day of school, or at least at the open house, everything was spoken about balance, you have to have balance. You can't just do academia, you should have clubs, and activities, and sports, and community involvement, right? If you're spending a lot of time, reading a lot and trying to do to AP classes, you might not be able to provide that balance. Now, you could be a superstar and do that, but that's a dig that I'm saying that's not, not a policy dig, but I think maybe more oversight into how the AP courses are run should be applied. The second one is a dig, I'm gonna get back to what I said earlier in the summer, against the block system. So you take a fall AP course in, for example, World History, and all AP exams are the first two weeks of May. So the class ends in January, and now you have February, March, and April, plus the first week of May, to study on your own. Now, I know, I talked to Mr. Posterino, they do provide some assistance in that, some assistance, but it still is left to the child to have to go through, and while they're taking their four courses in the spring, they have to then study for this AP exam, if they want to do well on the exam, if they even take it.